Matt McDonald. Commissioner Sylvia Stubbs and Commissioner-elect Lori Mark. Okay. What's the lead us in pledge allegiance?
You betcha.
Yep, gotcha.
I gotcha.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our meeting today is just really with one item, one focus, and that's to to have a public hearing regarding our subdivision ordinance. If this is kind of a broad statement because we don't know where we are as individuals, but if you've got a conflict of any potential for this, state it now. That's kind of the movie target, I know, but. Okay. Kristen.
So we'll open, I just want to get a little bit of a background before we open that up to public hearing. So we're here today to talk about just chapter six of the new or land use ordinance that's coming together. The full ordinance will be adopted or publicly heard or recommended on January ninth. And so we are just focused on the one chapter today. And part of this focus on the one chapter is from state mandate to update the subdivision ordinance itself. So that's why we're having a special meeting. Jens is, Jens, do you want to give a little bit of background before we launch into public hearing? Or would you like to do public hearing first?
Well, I think now is fine. You you covered it, I think. The whole purpose of this is just a reminder that, you know, we have the larger land use development and management ordinance, very comprehensive ordinance, and today we're focused just on chapter six, which is subdivisions. And the reason for focusing on that today on virtually the last day of the year is because the legislature is requiring that we pass a subdivision ordinance by the thirty first of this year. If we don't pass it, then potentially we lose funding for roads and so forth. So we're we're putting this to the front of the line to get this done today for that reason. And as you said, Kristen, this same chapter will be included in the discussion and approval on, what is it, the ninth? Oh, the twenty first. Ninth in planning commission, the twenty first in front of the county commissioners. So this chapter can be revisited again at that time. Purpose of today's meeting is to comply with the legislature's mandate.
So I think we, somebody needs to move this into public hearing. I'm moving this into public hearing.
Okay, get a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second to go into a public hearing for consideration or recommendation of the subdivision ordinance updates. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so what we'll do? We'll have in-house public hearing or public comment first. And then, once that's done, we'll go to online public comment. We'll we'll ask that when you come up, you state your name and where you're from, and then the rest is on you. We'll we'll give you three minutes. Okay. All right. Public comment.
My name is George Matoka from the county down in Manazuma Canyon. I just have some comments overall about the ordinance that I don't know if it's been considered or not. On page forty seven, item E, in terms of the requirements for filing for subdivision. Obviously, there's going to be a huge impact on developers for doing full sets of engineering plans for sanitary sewer water, legal work, without potentially the county even considering a preliminary subdivision plat. And so it appears that this is going right into final documentation in order to get administrative review, which is going to be hugely expensive and prohibitive for a lot of developers to even consider a project, which is going to stop development in the county. So just a point of concern there that it's going to inhibit expansion and economic development in the county. The other question I have is, it's an administrative review. Is there going to be outside consultants doing professional review of final engineering documents? Because I don't think an administrator can do that. So that's the comment I have under the general requirements. And then one other comment that I have is there is a actually two more comments on page fifty five, item eleven. The subdivision development, number of lots planned along with other factors, it's not quantified there in terms of the county administrator and the county fire marshal potentially requiring more substantial documentation improvements. So I find it would be helpful to have at least a number in there rather than leave it wide open. And then I believe my last comment is on page sixty, section eleven for small subdivisions. I think it's a good thing to have this in there. I guess the question I have is there's not a whole lot of restrictions on how it can be implemented. So for example, if you're on a county road, you could have multiple four lot subdivisions coming off the county road all in a row and use this waiver to get underneath the requirements. So having a provision in there that somewhat quantifies it a little bit better so that we don't end up with a forty lot subdivision along the county road, but in sections of four. That's all my comments are.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we will go to online public comment. Raise your hand.
All right, Stephen, go ahead.
Hi, guys. So I have no official comment on the subdivision ordinance, section six, but I'd like to make a couple comments on the general planning and zoning plan, if that's okay. Okay, first of all, usage table, page one, dwelling RV trailer as temporary use. I for community commercial, I think that most dwelling types are permitted on community commercial lots so that the conditional C for having a temporary RV use should be allowed. And if you're constructing a home on a community commercial lot, you should have the same rights as residential or the other. So I think I would ask you to consider that. Next one, usage code, page one, camp parks, resorts, glamping, not permitted on community commercial. But on page three, RV parks are. So that kind of draws a real just kind of a fine line between having an RV park and not having a resort on community commercial. It doesn't seem right that you can live in an RV, but a glamping site with possibly a cabin or a tent would be not permitted. It seems to split hairs there. Consider looking at that. Usage code, page two, the first item is energy production, okay? They mentioned solar, but I believe you should put the word commercial in there because basically the way it looks is you cannot have solar energy production on lots that are residential or community commercial. I I think that should clarify. I I don't think that was the intent of it to basically forbid people from putting solar panels on their house if they have a domicile on community commercial. So my suggestion is to add commercial energy production on that usage code, item one. The next one on the San Juan County Land Use and Development Management, page thirteen, bottom of the page. The definition of kennel states anything more than four animals, combination of cats and dogs. This is a really tough call, I know, because it affects the whole county. But and I know it won't be enforced probably unilaterally unless it's nuisance comments. But, you know, having four pit bulls in the middle of Monticello is a little bit extreme, but also having two two dogs and three cats in the country may not be. My only suggestion on this would be possibly split that and say for anything more than this number would be considered a kennel. Say three dogs and or three cats. I think that gives a little leeway. I think four dogs is too many. Three cats may not be, but that's just my suggestion. Again, we're in compliance, but a lot of my neighbors aren't, and that may create some problems later, especially because kennels have very few places you can officially have what is designated a kennel on the land use code. Item last, same document, the land use management ordinance, page sixty eight. We feel that section eleven is good.
Stephen.
Yes.
Stephen, you can go ahead and email me the rest of your comments if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Trent, I think it's sort of confusing for people if we're talking, if the purpose of this public hearing is chapter six, the subdivision ordinance, and people are giving comment on the full, I mean, to go back and forth. Like, I'm not, you know, I don't have my copy of of the land use ordinance up. Is can we, if somebody has comments on the general land use ordinance, can we ask them to wait until January ninth? Or to send them again?
I mean, that was explained right at the start.
I know it was. I know it was, but I but I certainly want to hear what everybody has to say. But if people are here to talk about the subdivision ordinance, I think we ought to stick to the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, and thanks for listening to my comments, and I do understand that. I was just hoping to get the changes in before the next meeting, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Stephen.
Any other, any other comments online? And just for the record, you can email comments to me at any time, and those get carried on to the planning division. In fact, I think we prefer emailed comments. It's very helpful for us to see it in writing and can be sure that it gets considered.
Looks like you have two pages of folks on there, Kristen. You might be able to go to the second page and make sure nobody's hands up. Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments being now?
I have a question.
Okay, I'm not sure who's talking.
This may inform.
Oh, sorry, I'm multitasking too hard. Go ahead.
My name is Teague Escleson. I'm from Olivas. I was curious when I was reading that that subdivisions could be reviewed by a administrator, subdivision administrator. Has that person been identified yet?
But when we when we say that, I'm more of a manager of it. So we actually have a full review team, and that includes, to answer your question, that includes the health department looking at the engineered septic. That includes roads, our surveyor, our attorney is looking at title report stuff. And so it's, I manage all those people and then kind of combine it all together. They actually have on the signature block, they have to sign that they approve.
So it's similar to the existing mine law where they have to sign off that all that's been done, so that part hasn't changed.
Correct.
Each one of them will sign off when these pieces have been done.
Correct.
Is there any additions to?
We would like to add roads on in particular cases where it's applicable. Sometimes it's not applicable. And also now maybe the the a bunch of subdivisions off of one county road, this is where roads wants to start to have their signature block on there. Because we really need each lot to have a twenty-five foot frontage. And they are, there has been approvals in the past that have not. And so it is what it is, but moving forward, we've realized that having four lots down off of the right of way is a bad idea. And then those four lots divide, then also you have twenty lots down the right of way. So there's things like that that we can, we all consider, and then I'm the one that just collects all the signatures.
Did you say that was a twenty-five foot?
Okay.
Oh. I think we're good.
Okay. All right, no other online public comment. I'm going to bring it back to in-house because there is a few new people that came in. If you want to make a comment about the subdivision ordinance, raise your hand. Okay. All entertain a motion.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, you have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right, legislative item. Consider making a recommendation to the San Juan County Commission the approval or denying the subdivision ordinance.
So on this one, you'll actually make a motion through, not just recommend, as as land use. And so basically, in summary, state, you have passed Senate Bill one seventy-four in March of twenty twenty-three, which was effectively in twenty twenty-three, um, to organize a process of approving subdivision through administrative staff. The main point of this was to shorten approval times for subdivisions that meet minimum requirements of the county. The county has been mandated to revise our local ordinance, the line was state code number thirty first. At this point in time, the scope of evaluation is chapter six, which will then be included in the larger land use development and management ordinance set forth for January ninth and January twenty first. So I think some highlights to this we've already touched base on. If we dive in here. So we are removing the process of it having to be approved through planning commission and then onto county commission. And we're moving that process just under the party administrator, and as I described to Teague, that's actually a team of people. I'm just the one person designated as the land or administrative authority for subdivisions.
Okay, just for clarity. So it doesn't come to us and it doesn't go to the commission?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it will just go through our administrative staff. There's been a few other things that are combined. If you go down to section five.
So while you're on that, real quick, is that mandated by the state that we do that process, or is that just how San Juan County has chosen to do it?
Um, I think it's a little bit of both. Jens, do you have anything you want to say on that?
I I don't think so.
The main thing was the time restrictions and limitations. So the state has put on us this maximum four review cycles before it's either accepted or denied. And if you look at planning commission being the review cycle and county commission being the review cycle, well, now we hardly have any time to review the staff.
Right.
And so that was a factor for our county. The other thing was that we have to have review cycles, say, within twenty days. Now, they did bump that back up. It was down to like ten, and it was just really impossible. So in twenty business days, my whole team has to look at it and get red lines back. Now, we do have some surveyors that we work with that we've kicked it back ten times. Well, this helps us in that on cycle four, if you haven't fixed it, we're just denying it, start over. So it will it will stop that permanent subdivision roulette. Because when I came on, there were subdivisions that were two or three years old. And some of those get hung up in the like when were divested, things have changed since then. And so I think having this in place where we are streamlining it a lot better means that we're dealing with the here and now a lot more. Does it meet our requirements here and now? Yep, okay, well, then we're not going to hold you up. Melissa had a few comments this morning about the complexity of subdivisions that we're approving. So a subdivision is only limited up to a ten lot threshold. Once it's over ten lots, it gets kicked into a planned unit development. And that's a different process where they have to have a lot more. That's your big developments. That's Valence Rock, Valley Estates.
Well, sheiks, one of sheiks.
Valley Estates. And so those types of large scale developments, those are headed under planned unit where they have to have, you know, road agreements and infrastructure, bonds potentially.
Development agreements.
Development agreements and all that. So this really subdivision, we're trying to simplify. Think of like family land trying to divide or like they're trying to sell off half their land. Now they still have to meet all of our requirements, but it just, we don't have to wait up once a month.
Appeals authority, who who's the appeals authority?
The appeals authority still gets kicked out to our our ALG.
So this is the scope here is more than four lots, less than ten.
Correct.
Ten or less, ten or fewer.
Yeah. And for those simple, we've changed the language a little bit because we were calling minor subdivision something else. The state was calling minor subdivision, so we have gone to a simple subdivision, which is four or less. If it's family land, we're not requiring them to do all all this front work. If they just wanted to go with their kids.
Right.
Can we talk about it now, Trent, or?
Sure.
Kristen, you have more you want to say? I I have a problem with how they're, you know, we're removed from the process as it's the county commission, and everything is left to administrative staff, and there's no option, as it's written right now, for a public hearing. And
No, there is the option.
It's not, well, but it's not written into into what we're asked to approve.
It's covered under the CLDMA.
Yeah.
So because it's stated in CLDMA, we're not going to restate it in ours. And that goes for all a lot of this document. If it's covered under state law, we have removed it out of our document because state law is constantly changing. That way we just reference the state code.
Right, so I've looked at the CLDMA, and I can see it's in there, but it doesn't say when you can call for a public hearing. And I think it would be helpful. I mean, if in the past, I think, Trent, you asked for a list of all the subdivisions that were, I mean, didn't we talk about that at a recent?
We did, and 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 I had, you know, I'd requested that Kristen keeps us in the loop of subdivisions that are approved.
Yeah, so how how does it go from us knowing about a subdivision to having a public hearing called? What's going to be the process for that?
I mean, it would be at my discretion of how many people are affected. You know, if it's a simple person splitting a lot in half, even if they want to sell it, you know, that's not affecting that many people versus if they're having ten lots come into a subdivision that's already an existing subdivision. You know, then we would we would probably do a public hearing because it's affecting.
Well, and I would think that a planned unit development would probably push it up that direction.
So I'm not talking about planned unit development. I'm talking about ten or fewer. But if I'm a neighbor, if I own property next to somebody who's going to subdivide, I might want to have a say in that.
And you would get notice, so you get no, a notice.
And then how do I?
You can respond back in writing.
Just to administration, though.
But just to administration.
Yeah, so that, a notice goes to all adjacent property owners of any property being affected. And that would have to be the ten days out, blah, 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 before we prove it. So we, there's a waiting period to get those out, get written comment back before we hit a level.
And I think if that person is so affected that that he can chase that channel.
Well, so well, so then that goes to the appeals section because in the appeals section of this, it doesn't say an adversely impacted party can appeal. It just says an applicant. So I mean, there's, basically, people don't have rights under this. Neighbors don't have rights. If that said, an applicant or adversely
aggrieved person, yeah, right.
Adversely, I can't remember what the language is, adversely impacted party aggrieved by a decision could appeal. But right now, I mean, it's basically out of our hands, out of the county commission's hands. It's up to your discretion to have a public hearing. If I'm a neighbor, even though I might be notified, I don't have any rights under this.
No recourse.
I have no recourse.
I mean, we have to have, because of our requirements on this being so strict.
Yeah.
An aggrieved party would have to have very, like, we can't deny somebody just because they don't want four lots next door.
Right, no, I get that, and I get that a lot of the time, you know, it's just people's preferences. But people still need to have options.
Yeah, but I I hear you, and we could add that language, but the requirements are so strict, as you were saying. Somebody to apply for a subdivision is so strict on what we're asking of them that we've already mitigated most concerns. So we could add that, and a person could write a letter saying, I don't like four lots next door. But if they've checked everything, we legally can't deny that property owner their rights to split it into four lots. So we can do it. I think that would be, it would go along the process, but because our requirements are so strict, I'm not sure that they would have any legal findings for us to deny it.
I still would feel better about it.
It's kind of like a conditional use, like a conditional use now. A lot of times they come before us and think that we're going to deny that conditional use, which we're legally not able to deny the conditional use. We can put reasonable restrictions on that conditional use, but we have to approve it. It's kind of the same thing there. I, for the most part, like it, other than I do like to see all of it come before us and a lot of it. Though we've we've cost people a lot of time sometimes, but, you know, it comes, we only meet once a month and then commission. And so so I kind of have the heartburn and, you know, but then sometimes it's just, it's just simple lot adjustments that we see, and a lot of that stuff we don't, doesn't need to come. Um, lot adjustments that we see and a lot of that stuff, we don't, doesn't need to come before commission. So I like not having to do that, but I think for the most part I'm in favor of it.
Before we leave Melissa's, do we want to add this to chapter six, an applicant or adversely impacted party, whatever the language is?
I think we ought to, I mean, I, I like to, to have a venue at least available for folks to at least come speak their mind. Even if you're not gonna stop whatever your neighbor's doing on his property, at least you have an opportunity to be heard.
But they're notified.
Yeah.
But they're notified, but they have no rights.
I mean, if they meet, the, the thing is if they meet all the requirements we've set forth, they've got everything.
Right.
We cannot deny a subdivision because a neighbor doesn't like it.
Well, and then the other, you know, the other concern, going back to like the public hearing and having our involvement is, you know, Kristen Stellar, right, she's great, but what if there was a planning administrator who was less skilled, less knowledgeable and something goes through that, um, that we don't necessarily, that shouldn't necessarily go through.
Are you, are you just gonna keep praising her?
I am gonna keep praising her.
What if they're denied?
Especially because the county commissioners are here.
Shay, what's your thoughts?
I, uh, you know, I, I kind of agree and I, I think the, the, the state has the codes, but we can, we can get a little more strict. So maybe in-house, we can come up with some sort of plan on when the administration should come to us and, because I don't think they need to come to us with everything. But, uh, but I do think there's a lot of things that could be slipping through the cracks, just like Melissa's saying, so I, I agree with that.
Well, could we still say at, at the discretion of the planning administrator and we can decide in-house where that discretionary line is? Or do you want to?
Well. Maybe if you would bring us into the loop, when, when you feel that there's an adversely affected party.
Yeah.
Just, just start emailing, you know, send us out an email and say, hey, I've got this on my desk.
That's an easy way to do it.
Okay. And then bring us in.
Okay. Jens, what were you gonna say?
Well, I just wanted to remind everybody that, uh, un, under CLEDMA, any adverse party can, uh, they have rights to object. And their timing for doing so is the ten day period, but it's from notification of the decision. Or when they see, uh, construction begin, if they hadn't been notified. Um, they can always, they can always bring their, their, their claim forward. But also just keep in mind that this process is designed to be, you know, fairly quick because the, uh, application should be for something that's already approved for the zone. You know, no, nothing unusual, no conditional uses, no, it, and it's a smaller subdivision. And so when you start to think about, okay, I have, I have this property, it's zoned for what I'm trying to do. Uh, I'm not asking for anything that would require, um, you know, n- nothing unusual, then, then it's, y- you know, the legislature is saying it's proper in that situation for the landlord to be able to control their own destiny, kind of move forward. Um, you know, the, a public hearing could be necessary and you can always have that, like you've said, so. I, I, the, the process is not without safeguards for the neighbors or without safeguards for the county. Um, because there is a lot of discretion still with the administr, the, the person in Kristen's position. Anyway.
Thanks, Jens. Remember when we used to see a preliminary plat one month and then the final plat the next month?
I remember those days.
I mean, it's been, our, our previous processes just get really strung out because you have to wait two or three months.
And that's a good, that's a good project.
Yeah, you know, this way if somebody comes in, their ducks are in a row, it meets our requirements, we're able to let them ahead. Um, you know, Matt gave me the example of the farmer dying of cancer, right? We don't want to have him wait six months to get it divided for the family. So we need to be timely about, you know, they, if somebody has come forward, they want to do this, they're ready to go, we need to, to let them fly with it.
And there's no issues here with vesting. I mean, once the subdivision is done, it's recorded, it's complete.
Correct. We are, um, we are requiring because, um, I think it's towards.
I think it's thirty days.
We are doing a thirty day limit to get it recorded. Um, that came out of a problem with, uh, we've had people, they get it approved, they hold on to it five years and then they bring it into the recorder's office, things have changed, that has caused us a lot of heartache. Um, so we're saying you gotta get recorded within thirty days, there's no reason for you not to record. It's done, let's go.
Um, I have some comments on section five too. So, and this is just for clarification, so the, so the county has to do its share of the review within twenty, twenty days, twenty business days. If the applicant drags it out, that's on them. So, so could that language be clearer? Uh, something like, what I, let me see, the county shall complete its review cycle with each of its review cycles within twenty days.
What if we say by the county here?
Whereabouts? Okay.
Now they can't drag it out forever because this was also a problem. So they have to complete it within one year of their original application.
Okay, so then, so, but I was actually talking about the next, each reviews shall be completed within twenty business days by the county there.
I think we got it covered briefly in the first sentence there.
I don't know, I, I just see people, um, messing with that. Okay, under five B, is it subject to subsection one or subject to section one? So that's section one, so it's not subsection.
Good catch.
Um, then under C, um, so it uses the word substantially. And so I am fine with the word substantially, but, you know, because it's harmonious, you know.
This was a legal term and we talked about it with our legal team and substantial evidence, substantial effects. Substantial is used a lot in legal.
Okay. And again.
Court cases.
But you're the one now, we don't decide what's substantially, right? You're the one who decides what's substantially, okay. So then under sub, under section seven two A, I think that's really confusing. Um, because you're talking about what they have to submit at the beginning and then you're talking about this A is about something that they have to do at the end when they record it. So what if you said, um, uh, blah, 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 and executed by the mortgagee or lien holder, comma, will be reco, will be required and shall be recorded. Just if, if you're gonna put it there at all. I mean, ah, for some reason my computer froze. I'm done.
Good job. Thanks Melissa.
Hey, anybody, Shay, do you have any comments you want to add?
Uh, just following up on that one earlier, I know we talked about in the, in one of our previous meetings about like adding another section on our packet, like the building things for the subdivision, like a building licenses, um, for subdivisions and stuff like that. I almost wonder if, just going off what Jens said, because it's not understanding the whole process of the state and all that stuff. Um, but I wonder if maybe just e, just an email or something like that, just to notify us of what's going on and if we see something that we want to be brought ahead, not that.
Be included in like the monthly report I give you guys?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't, I don't love the, we have to go through, you know, if someone's changing their lot lines or something like that. I, I think that's a waste of time in our meetings, but if we were just notified of it and if we were, if one of the planning commission was to catch something and be like, let's postpone that one and bring it to a meeting because there's something big to, we gotta deal with. Um, that would make sense to me instead of just like, you know, instead of wasting all our times in the meeting or totally neglecting the situation at all, you know, maybe that's a medium ground.
Um, I, we can do that, the one hiccup I see with it is somebody that has it ready to go. We might approve them in the first cycle where it would, it would be less than twenty days and it might not even make it to planning commission.
Right, what about even just as they come, I don't know what kind of workload that would add to you, Kristen, but, you know.
It's easy enough because I'm already sending it out to the rest of the team.
That's a great idea.
So I could even put you guys on like the live, I can totally put you on the live updated document.
Any other discussion, comments?
Yeah.
Cody, you're so quiet.
You're doing good, Cody.
It's a short meeting, let's leave it, let's leave it at that.
Because we want you to get going.
Yeah, here we go.
Hey, can we talk about Mr. George's comments here for just a minute? Uh, let's see, on page forty-seven, section E, and his assertion that the required documentation for even preliminary approval would be a little bit onerous. I mean, I read through that a little bit myself and thought the same thing, but I'm interested to hear your guys' thoughts or maybe some justification on why we have such detailed documentation needed for preliminary approval.
I will say from an administrative perspective, I get a lot of people, I'm thinking, I'm thinking and they start the process and I'll speak freely here, basically waste all of our time from my team and then they never actually are serious about getting through it. Sometimes they pay the fee, sometimes they don't, technically we shouldn't even start on it till they have an application. Um, and so that's, that has been a problem on our end where there's a lot of people who want to roll it around. But until we have an engineered septic plan and stuff, you're not that serious about it.
So we're kind of using it as like a weeding out process, honestly.
Yeah, but also like, they need to do their homework if they can even do it. You know, like some septic's you can't get on an acre, a typical septic. And they're saying, well, I want to divide my, my two acres into two, but you can't get the perk and so it's gonna take an acre and a half to get perk. Well, we don't want to sell lots that people can't build on. And so it, it front loads it onto the owner instead of onto us of, look, this isn't even possible. Because the other thing we don't want to have happen is they get to us, they pay us the application fee and then we say, hey, actually your, your septic engineer said they can't do this. They're like, well, why did I pay you a fee? And so it's, it's making sure that they've rolled it around, it's possible, they've worked with the surveyor, surveyors told them what's possible before they even pay us to start on it.
I like that. Fair enough.
The other comment he made, I guess, well, I like the small subdivision. I don't think it needs to be terribly involved or, or it is, or it is to, to people. I think it should be allowed, you know, I mean, I just look at San Juan County, I don't think there's a lot going on. You know, and if somebody wants to get started, something small, then I think there ought to be a way to do that as efficiently as possible and I think that allows it, so. I mean, you do have the, I, I understand you do have that, well, we did one, we're gonna do another one. But I mean, if you're spending your money and your time and you're out there doing something, then, then we'll deal with that on the next one. But I, I, I think.
That means you're committed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would, and hopefully you made some money, you know, I mean, honestly, like we, we give people a bad time sometimes about, I mean, that's what it's about, it's, it's about providing income and a future for yourself and others, so I think we make it kind of hard sometimes.
And this is probably not a huge money major, right? Versus the ten lots is a little bit of a different situation, they're probably selling those off.
But to his, to, to, um, Mr. George's point about having, you know, four and four and four and four, the, I don't know, I guess the guardrails or the, the gutter rails against that would be administrative staff, right? You guys would be able to kind of see that coming in.
Well, the, the biggest thing that, that wasn't being upheld that we, on, only now is that twenty-five foot road frontage.
Right.
Previously they had approved a bunch that created the issue.
Right.
Of access.
Right.
Um, now that we've really upheld that twenty-five foot wide road frontage, it's limited.
Not a private lane. Not a private lane.
It can be a private road, but it cannot be any accessing. Jens, do you have something?
Well, just a, just a quick thought, um, someone coming in with multiple four lot subdivision applications, um, really won't escape the more in-depth review because when it comes to your desk, you're gonna say, oh, this is right next to the one we just approved. And now the impact in the area requires, you know, maybe a different, um, you know, some additional requirements as far as access, maybe drainage, maybe, you know, think the improvements that come in because now we're talking about eight instead of four or maybe we're, on the third one, we're talking about twelve instead of four or eight. So what a person can't get away with in a, that's not the right way to say it, if a person comes in with a twelve lot subdivision, you, you're going to, uh, require certain things, if they come in with three, four lot subdivisions, you know, you're gonna see and say, oh, okay, well, the overall impact is twelve here. Now that we're on the third one, there's gonna be some additional requirements. And that's okay under this subdivision ordinance, you can, you can give them whatever requirements are necessary. It's, 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 it's you that will, you know, make that determination, so anyway, there is some safeguards still for, for that possibility of successive small subdivisions.
Any further discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the ordinance, uh, with the changes that, um, Kristen has highlighted in red.
Okay. Got a motion?
All second.
In a second. Before we vote, tell me why this isn't a recommendation.
Um, because it's a zoning change, the planning commission actually has to approve it and then the county commission has to approve it.
Okay, so we just don't make a recommendation to them, okay? All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the subdivision ordinance with the changes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we adjourn.
Shortest meeting ever.
All second. I'll second that one.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thanks, Shay.
Thank you, guys, happy new year.
Hold up that picture.
Yeah, your wife is gorgeous.
I, that was back when I was a lot skinnier too.
Yeah.